All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Spokane City Council Study Session for this week. We have three things on the agenda. First, we're going to hear from Washington Department Transportation Secretary Millar on Smart Growth. And then we're going to have a little bit of time with Councilmember Kinnear to talk about a resolution she has that would encourage the administration to hire some consultants in our Human Services Department to help get work done while we're waiting for new employees. And then we have a placeholder for a budget and American Rescue Plan to give some updates and take any council discussion on that. But let's start with Secretary Millar and Cara Odegaard, our Sustainability Initiatives Manager, I believe is going to introduce Secretary Millar on behalf of Councilmember Mum who really wanted this presentation but couldn't be here today. Take it away, Cara.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Good morning, Council. It's my pleasure to introduce to you today our presenters, starting with Secretary Millar. Roger Millar joined the Washington State Department of Transportation as Deputy Secretary in October of 2015 and was appointed Secretary of Transportation in August 2016. He oversees an agency that is the steward of a complex multimodal transportation system and responsible for ensuring that people and goods move safely and efficiently. And also joining us today is Shar Kay. Shar joined the Washington State Department of Transportation Eastern Region in 1987. As the Region Planning and Strategic Community Partnerships Director, she supports the region's development of inclusive, practical, comprehensive, coordinated, and equitable multimodal transportation outcomes. Welcome to both of you.
Well, thank you. And I trust I have the ability to share my screen because no meeting would be complete without a PowerPoint presentation, would it?
That should work.
That should work. You see something that says Transportation and Land Use?
Yes.
Wonderful. Well, thank you and good morning, everybody. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you a little bit about transportation and land use. You know that we are more and more recently viewing everything through a climate lens and an equity lens. That's the state legislature's direction. And what I'd like to talk about a little bit is the value of planning and then some of the economics of this. Because while, you know, people are getting used to and supportive of the idea that addressing climate change and equity are good ideas, and we'll talk a lot about that in this presentation. The other thing is it's good economics. And so you'll see a kind of a focus on that here. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have once we get through the end of this. But I want to talk a little bit about the value of planning. I am a civil engineer and a planner. Shar is a planner. And, you know, we believe that trend is not destiny. Here's a couple of early WashDot employees. We have evolved. And what we have found is that, as Emmanuel Kant said about planning, the best way to predict the future is to invent it. But a more recent philosopher, Bear Bryant, said, "Have a plan. Follow the plan. You'll be surprised how successful you'll be." Most people don't have a plan. That's why it's easy to beat most folks. And, you know, when you think about it, you really are competing in a regional and national and global marketplace for talent. And having a plan puts you in a good place in that competition. So you're responding to an evolving market. You're providing housing and transportation choices for the people of your community. You're making efficient use of infrastructure, preserving open space, protecting environmental areas, reducing VMT, urban runoff, and the like. There are a lot of reasons that we plan. The way we design our communities has enormous consequences. And we need to consider them as we move forward. You need to be aware that there are some things going on that affect the future of our communities. The market is changing. The recipe for growth is changing. And we've come to realize we can no longer afford to use tax money to subsidize inefficiency. So let's talk about the changing market a little bit. Your community is changing. The market's following those changes and preferences. It's happening because of two things. The millennials are rising and us baby boomers are aging. So here's just statistics, demographics. There was a very brief moment of time when Gen Xers were the largest cohort of the labor force. But no longer. It is the millennials. The silent greatest generation is aging out, and so are the boomers. And that change is profound. When you look at households, you know, we think about the fact that back when Leave It To Beaver was on TV, half of all households were families with kids. And we designed accordingly. A lot of people built subdivisions and highways. And what we've seen is a change in the share of households that are married, couples with children, or 18 is down at 20% or lower. And this is national statistics. It may be a little different from Spokane, but I don't think you'd find it to be substantially different. When I was the Planning Director of Missoula, we were at around 24% of our households had children in them. It's because people are living longer, and so there's a longer period of a household's time that is pre-children in the household and post-children in the household. And some folks decide not to have children in the household. But anyways, it's making a difference in the market and making a difference in people's preferences. Millennials especially are trending away from traditional suburban lifestyle. When you ask them, about half of them would prefer to live in a city or suburb that has a mix of houses and shops and businesses within walking distance. About 40% of them want to live in a small town. But only 12% want to live in that traditional suburban neighborhood that's houses only, the stuff we built after World War II for the boomers. And then boomers, folks like me, want to age in their community. And so as they age and they get to a place where maybe that big house is too much, because the only thing that's in their community is big houses, they have to leave to be able to survive. And we need to address that. So 77% of Americans want pedestrian-friendly features in their community, 88%, which is a huge change. They value the quality of the neighborhood over the size of the house. And the market is following that. So when you look at the housing supply at the turn of the century and the projections for housing demand, we actually have in our country, and you'll probably find in your community if you did the analysis, you've got larger, large-lot, single-family homes in excess of demand, but a need for small-ot homes and attached homes. So thinking on that, how will your community meet the needs of millennials and aging boomers in order to be competitive? If you continue to grow with large-lot, single-family homes, who's going to buy them? Who's going to buy the homes that your baby boom generation are living in now that they want to get out of as they age out? These are things you need to be thinking about. And then prosperity. The rise of the millennials and globalization are driving the economy. Millennials follow lifestyle. When I got out of school, most of my colleagues, most of my classmates were applying for jobs. And they looked for the best job, and then they moved to the community where that job was, whether it was Cleveland or Miami or what have you. What millennials do is they move to Portland, or they move to Spokane, or they move to Boise because they have heard it's a wonderful place to live. And then they look to find a job. So because millennials are choosing where they want to live before they look for a job, the technology market, the innovation market today is the resource they're looking for is talent. In a resource extraction economy, you are looking for iron ore, or coal, or trees, or fish, what have you. What business is looking for now is talent. And because talent is choosing where they want to live, business is following that. So we're moving from cube farms to these open office environments. We're moving from things like the Triangle Research Park in North Carolina to urban interactions places, office settings that provide that walkable feel. And if you were to go down to Research Triangle Park today, it used to be acres and acres and acres of parking. They are reinventing themselves in response to this. So across the country, business is responding to this. They're moving to the talent. They're choosing to relocate in downtown locations. You've probably seen that in your community. I've certainly seen that all around the state of Washington. So, you know, they're moving into the downtown in Las Vegas, in Chicago, in Spokane. So there's a price value premium as a result of that on walkable places. If you've got more of them, you're more competitive. So what we're finding is that when you think about your economic development strategy as a community, a lot of communities had economic development departments. And I've worked with communities all over the country. It was all about bringing in the big job generator. We're going to put a big pad out in the suburbs, and they're going to bring the big business in. It's going to create jobs. Increasingly, it's about the place. If you have an attractive place, the talent's going to move there. And if the talent moves there, business is going to move there. So building a great place to live and work and play is good economic development strategy. It's also good climate strategy, and it's good equity strategy. So how can your community take advantage of the changing nature of the economy to create jobs and wealth? And I've seen that down along your riverfront. The changes in Spokane over the years have been profound, and perhaps more is on the way. So let's talk about fiscal health, because we know what's happening with housing and the demographics. We know what's happening with the market. But how communities develop affect your costs as a municipal government and your revenues? When we spread development all over the landscape, there's a lot of stuff that you do that is dependent on the difference between here and there, at home and jobs and the like. If you're spread out over the landscape, it costs more to provide police protection and fire protection. School buses, public works, it costs more to plow the snow to deliver the mail. Compact development is the best deal in terms of the cost of governance. Low-density development rarely pays for itself. You'll find a lot of the upfront costs are borne by the developer and passed on to the people buying. But over the life of a community, it doesn't pay for itself. And it makes sense to reuse your existing infrastructure. We'll talk a little bit about that. So this is data from California, so obviously it doesn't apply here in Washington, but you can learn maybe a little bit from it. When you look at the per-acre costs for single-family homes, urban infill is much less expensive. And it's less expensive because it's already there. We built it years ago, and we need to take advantage of the fact that it's there. Compact development affects your cost of services as well. So development affects your revenue. When it comes to revenue, low-density suburban development doesn't generate as much tax revenue per acre as your downtown, for example. So bringing back areas that already exist is going to be great for your tax base. This is the per-acre revenue. Again, this is California. But urban infill generates a lot more money in municipal coffers. So costs and revenues, there's, you know, a relationship there that's important to think about as you move forward. This is some work that a friend of mine named Joe Minicozy, he lives in Asheville, North Carolina. But he uses GIS and tax assessors databases in really interesting ways. This is comparing the property tax per square foot or per acre of three different projects. One is a Walmart. The other is a six-story office building that was renovated. And the third piece is his house. And when you look at that, the, you know, again, that traditional kind of 70s, 80s, 90s era economic development thing was, we need more big box because big box generates revenue. But when you look at the renovated old office building from the 20s or the 30s, it's generating substantially more revenue on a per-acre basis. And even your infill, single-family housing, redeveloped, established neighborhoods generate a lot more property taxes per acre. Well, we're a sales tax-driven state. Okay, let's look at the Asheville Walmart and the downtown building. The building is generating $634,000 in property tax per acre versus $6,500 for the Walmart. It's generating twice the retail taxes. It also has people living there, and it has many, many more jobs per acre. So, you know, this is things you need to consider when you think about your strategy. This is from Billings, Montana, another place that I used to live, looking at the value to the county of properties around the community. And you can see the county residential on the left-hand side, $161 an acre. City, single-family residential, $1,100 per acre to the county. And then moving up from Kmart to Walmart to Costco, and then downtown buildings like the bank buildings in the central city. And then the one outlier was an eight-story office building. It used to be the Montana Power Building. Now it has restaurants on the ground floor, a couple floors of office, and then condominiums above it, generating just substantially more tax yield for the county than the development out in the county. And an interesting exercise you might want to consider is taking your GIS layers and your county assessors database layers and looking at the revenue generated per acre of different land uses. This is Billings on the map. You can see right where downtown is, because that's where the revenue is being generated. And we used this when I was in Missoula. We were a rapidly growing community. And the real estate community came to the city and the county and said, "We have 15,000 new households coming to the region." And, you know, it's the scale. Missoula's different from Spokane. "We need to annex a bunch of land to make that happen, to accommodate that growth. We need to annex a bunch of land right now." And we took our zoning map and our GIS data and our assessors data, and we were wondering what was redevelopable within the existing city limits. So we took parcels around the city that were zoned to accommodate housing. So residential zones and some of our commercial zones, some of our industrial zones could accommodate housing. And we looked at the value of the land, the value of the dirt, and then we looked at the value of the improvements on the land, which are both available in the database. And where the land was worth more than the improvement, we defined that land as having redevelopment potential. And when we looked at all of the land that had redevelopment potential, under our current zoning, without upzoning anything, we have room within the existing city boundaries for 40,000 households. So demand for 15, capacity for 40, no zoning changes, it's just building on that land. And you could ask the question, well, you know, okay, the dirt's worth more than the building. What about places where the dirt's worth twice as much or three? There's all kinds of ways you can scale that to see what's available in your community. But when we presented that information, the development community in Missoula, at first they said, "No, that can't be." And then they looked at the numbers, and their next question was, "Can I get a copy of that map?" And what's been happening there is infill and redevelopment because the capacity was there. It made sense, given the market, and it made a whole bunch of sense for the community, given the revenue generated. So here are three examples from Tennessee, which may or may not apply to Washington State. But here's Tennessee. You got the conventional suburban development. You may see a little of that around your city. And then that kind of new urban suburban stuff that you see a lot of around. And then the Gulch, redeveloping something in the compact urban core of the community. Here's the acreage of the three projects. Here are the housing units in the three projects. Here's the gross revenue to the community from the three projects. Here's the revenue and the cost to the community to serve those projects, and the net revenue to the three projects. It's readily apparent to me. Here's revenue per housing unit going to the city and revenue per acre going to the city. What we're finding is that downtown and close-in neighborhoods yield a much higher return, that village-style suburban yields a higher return than conventional development. And you can use the surpluses that you generate in your downtown and close-in neighborhoods to offset the cost of serving your existing neighborhoods. And when you add the cost of infrastructure, the trends become even stronger. So just considerations to take as you're moving forward. So now I'm a transportation guy, and I just spend a bunch of time talking with you about land use because there is a nexus there that we sometimes forget. But when you think about developing our transportation system, since the end of World War II, the priority was on high-speed mobility. Didn't really matter where you were going, as long as you could get there fast, and get there fast in your car. So when we invest in auto-oriented, high-speed mobility, development follows that. The market is going to follow that, and it puts every other mode of getting around at a disadvantage. And that's where we are today in a lot of communities in our state. That spread-out development creates additional transportation demand, and the cycle just repeats itself. You build a little wider, it fills up. You build a little wider, it fills up, and on, and on, and on. We need to be thinking about the importance of access rather than mobility. It's one thing to be able to get in your car and zoom around the landscape. It's another thing to be able to get from where you live to where you work and get from where you live to where you go to school, or you shop, or you play. So if we rethink about access, and then we think about our urban streets as places of social and economic exchange instead of being car sewers, if you think about non-motorized transportation as being core, when I come to Spokane to visit, the only time I use an automobile is getting from the airport to the downtown. Everything else I do on foot or on taking transit, or, you know, car sharing with my team. You need to make sure the neighborhood's streets are safe for play, that commercial streets are safe for walking and cycling. They need to move traffic, through traffic and local traffic, but they've got to be safe for walking and cycling. And you need to plan for people and places as opposed to cars and traffic, because people spend money in places. Cars don't. So development practices, these are good ideas, you know. Work to keep your VMT below the area average when you do your long-range transportation plan. Are you driving VMT and VMT per capita down? What are you doing to contribute to your job's housing balance? Are you mixing land uses at the finest grain the market will bear? Mixed use is great, but there are times it just doesn't make sense to put retail in every project. So you've got to be smart about that. Developing clusters. Put high-density housing near your commercial centers. Phase the shopping and recreation to keep pace with the housing. Make your subdivisions into neighborhoods with well-defined centers and edges, and make it possible for people to get the things they need within walking or bicycling distance. Not that they have to, but give them the option of doing that. Reserve school sites early to attract schools to the places you want them. A lot of times, school districts will go to the cheap land, and it's cheap to buy, it's cheap to build, but it's very expensive to operate, and it puts all of us at a disadvantage. Concentrate your commercial development. Make shopping centers and business parks all-purpose activity centers instead of, you know, eight-hour-a-day places. Make them 24-hour-a-day places. And try to tame your auto-oriented uses, or at least separate them from your other uses so that they are safe and convenient for everybody. So when we look at things like site planning and development of land, it's legal and physical access, it's lot lines, driveways, those kinds of things. There are lots of ways to do this. What happened traditionally in the West, and I've worked in community after community, where the plot was developed by somebody back in New York City that didn't take into consideration topography and buildable land and the amount of cut and fill you'd have to do and the existing features. And it's just lines across a topo map that make it really difficult to do anything efficient and effective. So here's three different takes on one piece of land. And kind of the traditional take was, well, we can get 39 lots in there under the zoning, and it takes 2,500 feet of road to do it. But with the reservation of some green space, you can do the same thing with less land, or less land dedicated to roads. In some cases, a lot less land dedicated to roads. And people's lots aren't quite as big, but they have the amenity that they were looking for in their backyard. Now it's a park. Here's another example, kind of the conventional, how we would chop up a piece of land that had sensitive areas on it. And another way to do that, which generates the same amount of housing, but creates easements and deed restrictions that allow the people that live in those homes to enjoy the sensitive areas that they may have wanted to be next to when they made the purchase. Another example, 44-acre parcel, same 20 lots. The lots are smaller. There's great open space and access to that open space for everybody in the community. Impact assessments. You probably do impact assessments. They usually consider travel speed and vehicle operating costs and crash risks and those kinds of things. But you might want to add to that conversation, what are the downstream congestion impacts? But you might want to add to that conversation, what are the downstream congestion impacts? That big suburban development might have a good level of service at the entrance, but what happens when all those cars get downtown? What happens to non-motorized travel? What's the cost of parking? What's the vehicle ownership impacts, particularly for working families? If working families have to own multiple vehicles to do what they do, that's ten thousand a year per car on the family budget and the greenhouse gases emitted and, and, and. What are the land use impacts? Is it the best use of the land? What about non-drivers? What about the twenty-five percent of Washingtonians who don't drive? What are the equity impacts? And what are the impacts on public health? That's a true holistic impact assessment of development. Parking, you know, in terms of things you can do in your parking management world, reduce the minimums, put maximums in place and cap them. Share parking. When you have uses that need parking at certain times of day, combine them with uses that need parking at other times of day. Manage parking at a district level instead of individual parcels of land. I've been to community after community where land sits undeveloped because the zoning ordinance requires so much parking and it all has to be addressed on that parcel. There's no room left over for the building. So, look at parking as a district, as a utility rather than a part of the development. And then control parking demand with transit investment, transit-oriented development, unbundling parking from development and parking pricing. Where's it located? How's it screened? Taking advantage of on-street parking, using structures instead of acres and acres of asphalt, using some different impact techniques and cross-access easements and the like. And increasingly, as we decarbonize our space, making room for electric vehicles and other types of parking. Street connectivity is huge. You look at your existing neighborhoods, they have a well-connected street network, which means somebody that lives there can get where they need to go without getting out on the arterial street, or in the case of Spokane, without having to get out on I-90 to go a mile or two. So, in that well-connected network, you know, it's time for school, you open the door, wave goodbye to your kid, and they will walk across the park down the street and there they are. In a typical subdivision, and we see these all over Washington State, it's a team effort to get a child to school because you can't walk there. So, you've got to get in your car and go down the street to the collector and down the street to the arterial and thus to school. And it's taken two people to get one kid to school and a car. And when they all come to school at the same time, you have a mess. And we've all lived through that. I did when I was raising my kids. So, in concluding the talking at you and looking forward to the talking with you, a great quote by a guy named Greg Paul, "We have freedom." And that's the great thing about where we live is that we have the freedom to make choices and we can make informed, humane, and intelligent choices about the world we want to leave to our kids, or we can make uninformed, selfish, and stupid choices. So, that's where we're all at as decision-makers and the subject matter experts that support decision-makers. I am going to stop sharing my screen. And...
Great.
Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for being so prepared and bringing us so much information. Questions or comments from council members? I have to see Councilmember Kinnear first and then Councilmember Cather.
That presentation was music to my ears, first of all. It was really exciting to, and I'd love to have a copy of that if that's possible because I'd like to share that with Councilmember Mum. It just, everything makes sense. Part of the things that you talked about, we are doing here, especially around developing our centers and corridors, so I was excited to hear about that. But I wanted to talk specifically about our downtown because about thirty percent of our downtown is surface parking lots. And to me, that's an opportunity to put in more density, more housing, more things that we could do as a community than just warehouse cars. And I'm wondering if you have any, you know, rabbits in your hat or tricks up your sleeve to tell us how we can move that along a little quicker. These are privately owned lots, so we don't have the ability to tell people that they have to put in housing, but what kinds of things do you think we could implement that would move this along?
Well, that's a great question. And, you know, one thing that I've found is quite often that parking is required by your zoning ordinance. So, you know, it's an interesting thing. I see a lot of little absurdities and things we do. You know, for example, we don't want people to drive drunk and yet our ordinances require parking lots at bars. You know, we put establishments that sell alcohol out in commercial districts where everybody has to drive to go there. Does your ordinance impose suburban outdated parking requirements on dense downtown urban development? I don't know, but that's the first place that I would look. You may have parking minimums in place that you may not need. You may have the opportunity, again, to manage parking as a district as opposed to requiring parking on each individual property. There are things you can do there in terms of providing incentives to, for development to happen. You know, I've found, and I've rewritten three zoning ordinances. I rewrote the Missoula zoning ordinance, the Tempe, Arizona zoning ordinance, and the McCall, Idaho zoning ordinance. And what happens to zoning ordinances over time is a bad thing happens in the community and the city council changes the code to keep that bad thing from ever happening again. And then another bad thing happens and another bad thing happens. And my old boss, the mayor of Missoula, used to say, "Missoula is a Native American word meaning no," because our rules are all these different ways to say no to things. And so, every once in a while, you have to clean it up and think about, rather than prohibiting what you didn't like, how do you incentivize what you want? And, you know, those parking regulations are one piece of it. Housing opportunities for mixing uses are another piece of it. There are a lot of different tools in the toolbox.
Councilmember Cather.
Yeah, Secretary, thank you for being here and for your presentation. I did enjoy it quite a bit. A few things, though. I'm wondering, from your perspective, you know, I think a lot of the examples that you gave were kind of demonstrating how to better do large track development. You know, we're mostly a built-out city, not a lot of large-track options out there, so it's not something I think that's first and foremost on our minds, but infill development is and trying to find ways that we can increase infill, increase growth. And there were a couple of things that you talked about that I thought were a little in conflict. One about, you know, we don't want to make people have to travel on arterials and go to other parts of the community to access, you know, whatever it is they're looking for, but on the other hand, we should push growth to centers and corridors, which kind of does exactly that. And so, I'm just kind of curious, how do you kind of balance that view with when you're grown out, you're built out, you don't have a lot of options, you need infill? How do you accommodate that housing in that scenario and do it in a way that is creating vibrant, walkable communities and improving, you know, the number of units that we have and that sort of thing? And, you know, and pushing more downtown is an option and, of course, that's going to emphasize more on the rental side because of our condo laws, it makes it very tough to do homeownership opportunities in a downtown core. So, it really limits options when you just kind of push all growth into those sorts of scenarios. So, we'd really just like to hear from you, kind of your expert opinion on how we balance that and, you know, how we might move a little more on the infill side.
Oh, that's a great question. And, you know, if it was easy, it'd already be done, right? You know, it's the nature of where we're at. You have a tremendous opportunity with your existing close-in residential neighborhoods for revitalization in a way that if you do it right, doesn't spur gentrification that pushes people out of those neighborhoods. But you've got communities where the roads are in place, the utilities are in place, the relationships between where people live and where people shop are in place. It's just a matter of focusing your energy on that and maybe lightening the requirements so that in those existing neighborhoods, it doesn't have to all be single-family. One of the places I look at is right on the interstitial space between the residentially-zoned land and the commercially-zoned land is an opportunity to kind of grow up in terms of the densities of housing. Because one thing you'll see in those, in those, well, you'll see in any subdivision, any residential community with lots of single-family housing, is there are people that have spent their entire adult lives in a house and all their relationships, it's where their church is, it's where their store is, you know? And they're getting old to the point where they can no longer sustain their lifestyle in that house. They need to move to assisted living, they need to move to a smaller, you know, apartment or something like that. And the only way they can do that in their town is to leave the neighborhood they spent their entire adult life in because there's no home nearby. So, looking at, you know, your arterial corridors where you've got your commercial development, can you mix uses there, stepping down into the neighborhood such that people can live where they've been as they age out so that their kids? You know, one of the things I learned when I was down in Tempe is the, you find that the people we're trying to zone out of our neighborhoods are our children and you need to be thinking about how you do that. You've got a great opportunity. You know, there's this North Spokane Corridor Project, you may have heard of it. We talk an awful lot about what's happening in the corridor itself, but a place where Spokane has an incredible opportunity is where 395 is today and how the character of that is going to change as the trucks and the through-traffic move out to the North Spokane Corridor. That's where you should be spending an awful lot of energy thinking about, how do you take the incredible success you've had with your downtown and your riverfront and cross it with some north-south, you know, of the same character or similar character or whatever character you decide you want it to be? But I hate to see a busy, multi-lane arterial highway become an empty, multi-lane arterial highway. And instead, it ought to be reimagined for the kinds of things you want and your community wants.
Secretary, I appreciate that. And that is a big emphasis, is trying to figure out ways that we can grow that area there. It's kind of called the YARD or the Northeast Public Development Authority. And there's been a lot of interest in trying to grow housing, especially in that area. And unfortunately, there's been some pushback in doing so, but that is something that we are very interested in doing and hopefully we'll figure out a way to make it happen.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
First of all, thank you, Roger, and a big thank you to Charlene Kaye behind the scenes, who's been a wonderful asset to us here in Spokane. So, you mentioned the North-South Freeway. Roger, I'm from East Central.
Mm-hmm.
And I just sound really interested in WashDOT because you guys are significant land owners...
Yep.
...in many of these areas. And East Central, extremely important to us in that community and really important to the city of Spokane for infill development. So, when you started talking about your equity, tell me some thoughts you have on East Central in Spokane and the role that WashDOT is going to play in this neighborhood that's being affected twice by the interstate in that community and which is absolutely ripe for development.
That's a great question. You know, the very last project I did before I came to WashDOT, I was the vice president at Smart Growth America. And the very last technical assistance project I did before I left Smart Growth and came to WashDOT was working on the Sprague Corridor with the city of Spokane. And so, I'm kind of, I was familiar with that coming in and those hundreds of acres of land that we bought and condemned properties on to build the collector-distributor system and all the stuff that was associated with the North Spokane Corridor as it was envisioned in earlier versions. And I do know that there was a wonderful park under where I-90 is today and there were decisions that were made in the past that disproportionately impacted your community and that the disparities resulting from those impacts exist today. What we've been doing, and Char's been a big part of this, and Mike Grubner's been a big part of this, you know, WashDOT, there are two things I don't do as secretary. I don't write the law and I don't appropriate the money. So, when people hammer on, "Why is WashDOT building that corridor?" WashDOT's building that corridor because the community and the state have been insisting on it for decades now. And so, we're doing what we're directed to do. But we've looked at, you know, a lot of that land was needed because we needed a collector-distributor system. We've taken that off the table. A lot of that land was needed because the traffic engineers at the time wanted to be able to go from I-90 onto the Spokane, North Spokane Corridor at a design speed of seventy miles an hour. And we took that design speed of seventy miles an hour and reduced it to forty-five and pulled everything in and made it more compact. There's a lot of land that we have acquired that we do not need for the project and that land will be available. And, you know, the way the law is written, the city will be right up front in terms of opportunities to participate in that. We are not able to say specifically what because we haven't gotten to the final details on the designs for that part of the project. You know, Mike and his team are interested in getting there as soon as they can, but as soon as they can is, it's a different timescale, probably from your timescale in terms of urgency, but we want to get there. We are also constrained by that pesky Eighteenth Amendment that limits the use of land that's purchased with gas tax dollars and the need to get fair market value for it. And that's a place where you should be working with your legislatures to see if there are changes to the law that might advantage you as that land becomes available. So, I think now is the time to be thinking about the, how do you make that as less, least cost to the city as you can so that you can create that affordable housing and that transit-oriented housing? And then begin to do the planning for what that space is going to look like and how it's going to be served. I know that Spokane Transit is working on BRT, on that east-west alignment. So, what are the transit connections, the bicycle connecting connections to that community that would make it a community that was less dependent on the automobile? You know, Char's been a big part of the conversations out there, but, you know, beyond what we do working with you, you need to be thinking about what are the legal constraints or opportunities that the city might want to pursue with your legislative delegation moving forward? And then what opportunities might you have in terms of grant funding from the federal government and elsewhere to make those things a reality? I hope that helps.
I wanted to just follow up briefly on it because in talking with Mr. Grubner, he was talking about the concept of perhaps some long-term leases, but he shared with me that there's a, I'm not sure if it's a state law or if it's a departmental policy, that the revenues from those leases would go sort of to the central WashDOT instead of the regional to keep up. And I'm just, I don't know if you've been part of those conversations, but we're putting that on our legislative agenda likely to see if we can tweak that to make that a little easier to do. I don't know if you have it, are prepared to comment on that, but just wondering about that.
Well, you know, I can comment in general and Char may have a better sense of the specifics, but in general, that land was purchased with federal money and state money, gas tax dollars. And where the legislature is, where the people of the state of Washington are, is they said anything purchased with state gas tax dollars has to be used for highway purposes. And so, any revenue generated, if we use it for something other than a highway purpose, we have to charge fair market value for that. And any revenue generated goes into the motor vehicle fund. It doesn't stay with the project, it doesn't stay with the region, it goes to the general, the motor vehicle fund and the legislature decides how it gets spent. So, you know, that's the constraint we work under. Given that, we've been pretty creative, you know, the notion of leases and those kinds of things. And I know the legislature, when Speaker Chopp was Speaker of the House, he was always looking for ways to make affordable housing easier to do on those pieces of land. So, I think when you're looking at your legislative agenda, are there workarounds on affordable housing? Are there workarounds on development patterns that reduce reliance on the automobile, reduce demand for highway? There are a number of things you might be able to do. Char, did I miss anything specific to the project?
Thank you for that. We'll be informed on that when we talk with our legislators and we've got some great ones from right in the middle of Spokane. Councilmember Stratton.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I learned...
Thank you so much for that presentation. I learned a lot, and I enjoyed it, and it was understandable, and thank you. My question is, one of the things that I wrote down is when you said, "Single-family homes are in excess of demands."
Yeah.
And as I look at what we're facing here in this community, like other communities, is trying to get more affordable housing options for people. Um, and I, I understand, you know, infill downtown and getting buildings reused to house, um, people. But when we talk about neighborhoods, um, some of the neighborhoods, for instance, in my district have land available, um, that could be used for, um, affordable housing opportunities, but they wouldn't be, um, a single-family home. They would be, um, a triplex or a fourplex. We've talked about this before. How do you balance the, um, you know, that's a new concept for some traditional neighborhoods. We have neighborhoods that don't want that in their neighbor, you know, on their blocks. How do you balance that and try to help people understand that if there, if there are opportunities in those neighborhoods, not necessarily in a center corridor, but in the, in those neighborhoods, that building something besides a traditional one-family home benefits the, benefits the whole community?
Boy, if I had the answer to that one, I'd be king of the world.
Because a lot of them, they don't want it on their block, and I don't know how you work around-
Well, a, 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 a lot of homeowners, and I, I count myself as, as a homeowner, a lot of homeowners are concerned about the value of their property and a risk to the value of their property. And this whole, um, kind of, they call it missing middle conversation. I've been watching it here because my wife is the Chair of the Olympia Planning Commission. So they had a big debate about the missing middle and the types of housing you're talking about. And there are people in the neighborhoods that really like it, and people in the neighborhoods that are really, really opposed to it, and, you know, and we go round and round. Um, I, I go back to that space between the established, single-family neighborhood and the commercial strip that, you know, is quite often, it, it, it doesn't work for retail, and it doesn't really work for housing, but that might be the place where you can do some of that, you know, missing middle stuff, the, the duplexes, the triplexes. It's not in the core of that single-family community. Um, and it's more attractive than a, a vacant lot or, you know, garbage and, you know, crime, those, those kinds of things. Uh, work on those kinds of, of ideas, uh, look at where your transit investment is, and tie that to this, this kind of, uh, of, of housing style. Um, and, and then be talking in your community, a lot of the people that live in that neighborhood that are worried about having a duplex next door or a triplex next door. Uh, you know, I'm, you know, I'm sixty-two, and at some point, I'm not going to be able to keep a single-family house up. Do I have to move to another town, another state? You know, we, we used to do that. You know, let's all go to Arizona, let's all go to Florida. Our generation wants to age in place. But if your neighborhood is all large lots, single-family homes, or even small lot, single-family homes, once you can't manage that, you have to leave your place. So creating options in the community and having the conversation in that context may address some of that resistance. Uh, that said, you're going to have tough, tough conversations. You probably already are, um, and they'll, they'll be tough going forward.
Thank you. And when you're ready for your next move, you can come to Spokane and you can, um, we happen to have a planning director position open, and, um, we will make sure that you get that job and you can help us out.
I'm a recovering planning director.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. Thank you. I do have to lean in on this, though, and this is environmental justice. With all those lots and those homes that have been taken out, especially in the East Central neighborhood, it has attracted some unwanted activity and trash that is really concerning to the neighborhood. Uh, we hear about that. Many folks think it's city land, but it is not city land. It is WashDOT land. So I just want to lean in on WashDOT, uh, who I've been called to step up their game in this area because it is a challenge, and our communities really lean in on us to address it.
No, it's a, it's an excellent observation, and it's not unique to Spokane. Um, you know, the, the life along the interstate, along our, our, our big highways, uh, there, there is trash, there is graffiti, uh, we have problems with homelessness in those, in those communities. Um, and we're addressing it as best we can, uh, and I encourage you to keep that conversation going with, with Mike and his team. Uh, we have to put it in a, a couple of contexts. One is, uh, looking at our budget, and I have a whole nother presentation I could tell you about our budget, but we, um, we're good at building stuff. We have a good reputation for that, and most people think the DOT is, yeah, you guys build stuff. We also operate and maintain and preserve two-hundred-billion-dollar worth of facilities for the people of Washington State. We should be spending about two billion a year keeping things up to snuff. We spend nine-hundred-and-twenty-five million. So it's, it's kind of like what we've decided as a state. It's kind of like we own a house together, and we put a new roof on it, we know it's going to last twenty years, and we fully expect to replace it in forty. You get to a place where your furniture's getting wet because the roofs falling apart. And we're in a place, I would, I would love to have lots of people to go out and do litter cleanup and, and graffiti removal and the rest of that. But what we've directed Mike to do and the other region administrators, we're not doing preservation work on any state highway where the speed limit is under forty-five miles an hour because we don't have the money. And so we're balancing our activities in the spaces where you have a, a concern with patching puddles, repairing guardrail, piling snow, the, 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 the things that we need to do. We have less than half the money we need. You know, that said, uh, we can do a better job focusing in on areas that are of concern to communities like yours, and I would encourage you to, to, to talk to Mike about that. The other thing we find particularly with the homeless situation, and it's, it's not just a Seattle problem, it's a Moses Lake problem. It's just, but we were just working with the city and, and with the county in Spokane Valley on, on some issues. We really are in a triage mode. Um, I don't think there's anybody in Washington State that thinks that a, a safe and attractive place to ra- rest your head at the end of the day is under a WashDOT bridge, including us, and the, and the people that are living there. But it's, it's the best they can do, and the solution to their problem is housing, which is something I know you're trying to have happen in, in those, uh, those parcels of land. We need to make that housing available. We need us to make, uh, the counseling and, and services available for the homeless to, to bring them back into a, a, a different part of our society. We need to be able to store their stuff as they transition. We need to make the place safe, and we need to clean it up. We have the authority and the appropriation for the cleanup. So we have to work as partners with local government and, and social service communities. And we're, we're eager to do that. I know we've reached out to the city, and we're developing relationships in that space. And I would encourage you to, to point, point us where the problems are, and, uh, we'll work together to solve them.
Thank you, Roger. I appreciate that, and I'll be glad to take you on a tour, so.
And tell, tell your legislative delegation that as, as exciting, as exciting as those bright, shiny new transportation facilities are, our economy runs on the stuff that's out there today, and we can't take it for granted anymore. And a, a part of that preservation and maintenance is, is cleaning up the litter and painting over the graffiti. Char, I wanted to add to that.
Char, go ahead, Char.
Yeah, I think, I think that, um, really is a great nexus to what Councilwoman Beck spoke of earlier, and it was centered around, uh, the proposal, uh, that the region has around placekeeping. You know, we're developing places, uh, there, there's, there's spaces that are going to be, uh, created as a result of the N S C. And part of the proposal, uh, with the long-term leases, after conversations with those who are familiar, whether it's HUD or Commerce, that sweet spot is about fifty to seventy-five years for long-term lease, which would, would provide for funding, maintenance funding, uh, that could be offset and placed right back in to, um, the area that, um, Councilwoman, uh, Wilkerson is speaking of, all along the corridor. So we're not just, we're, similar to what happened in I ninety, when that was originally, uh, developed, there were some great public spaces, uh, that were created. Um, we know some of the challenges we have under the viaduct. There has not been a consistent, uh, uh, means to provide long-term maintenance, uh, what we're, we're, we're terming as placekeeping. So this would be a way to have that continuous, um, stream of revenue that would be dedicated directly to, uh, those spaces for maintenance.
Great. Thanks, Char. Um, Councilmember Kinnear.
Thank you. I know we're running out of time here, but I just wanted to follow up with what Councilmember Wilkerson said. And in, in the interim, before, um, WashDOT has, uh, decided how much land they're going to not use and what's going to, what the process is for releasing it, is there a way that we could activate the space so that it can be used, such as, um, putting in gardens or, um, just grass or meadows, dog parks? And instead of WashDOT having to do the maintenance on that, they, that maintenance can be done, um, by the city or by the community members that would be using the space? And so I'm just throwing it out there as an option to activate the space until something permanent is done with it.
Those are all great ideas. I, Char is fully writing furiously as we go. Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the WashDOT team? All right. Well, I just want to thank you, uh, Char and Secretary for really spending some real time, not just with us, but preparing and engaging us. And I, I share the comments of others that it was very, um, accessible for us and for the people who are watching, I'm sure. Um, so, um, we will let you go. We have a little more business. We look forward to continuing conversations with your regional team here and our legislators on making this connection work of this, uh, publicly-owned space, uh, that we would like to activate, both in the short and the long term. So thanks again, all of you, and I'm going to now turn things over to Councilmember Kinnear to brief resolution that you filed yesterday.
Great. Thank you so much.
Take care.
Thanks, Mr. Millar. Um, so everyone has probably seen this by now, and, uh, it is in response to a letter that we received from the C O C, and many conversations that we've had, our study sessions certainly with the C H H S board and the C O C and all the issues surrounding, uh, C H H S. So we know that there's a strike team working hard to get more, uh, employees who will be working in C H H S and working to get, uh, consultant to get some of these dollars. So this isn't met, meant as a way to poke at the administration merely to say, "We are supportive of this. We'd like to move forward as quickly as possible because there are deadlines on this money." And so I'm proposing to bring this before council, see if we can get some support to pass this as us saying, "Yes, let's go forward, and, and by the way, let's make this a first priority so we can get this money and get it out into the community." So I'd love to entertain questions if any of you have questions. Councilmember Caskart does.
Yeah, thank you. I, I don't have a problem with the resolution after reading it, except that I think we should just modify the language a little bit since the mayor has said that she's, she is doing what, what we're asking her to do in the resolution. So some, some reworking of the language, I think, to either note that she's agreed with us or we agree with her, but we're moving forward in a unified way, I think would be a, would be the most beneficial way to do it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Uh, thank you. So I agree with Councilmember Kinnear, and we could wordsmith it, but the community is looking for us as the legislative body for some leadership. And I believe this will actually stand strong in tandem with the mayor and the work that's going ahead. But we are saying, "This is what our community is asking for. This is what we're committed to delivering. We are willing to work with the administration as they go forward, but this is a priority." And like Councilmember Kinnear said, some of these monies have shelf life, and I'm concerned, and we have contractual obligations, uh, to other entities, uh, in the region to deploy this money, and our obligation is to HUD to distribute it like we said that we would do. So really, if you look at it, it's just a really collaborative piece going forward, letting our community know that truly, we're on the same page.
I have a question for you, Councilmember Wilkerson. I, I think yesterday I got, um, some kind of infographics, not sure, from Eric Finch, who's on the strike team from I T, trying to help out. And he's wanting to make a presentation to council about what the plan is. Um, and I just, I don't know how much room you have on your agenda for Monday's Finance Administration meeting. Do you have ten minutes on there or not, if you know?
I will rework the agenda and make room for him because we really all want to know what the plan is.
Yeah. Okay. Great. Councilmember Caskart.
Yeah, on, on that note, and that reminds me, one other thing I think that could, could go in this resolution, but regardless, I think should be expressed to the administration is just, we just want to be in constant contact. We want to know what's happening. There needs to be a steady stream of communication. Um, you know, I, I think all of us, or most of us, have been in kind of a similar boat, not exactly knowing where things stand or what's happening, and I just think more communication would benefit us, benefit the folks we're representing, and, and help keep us on the same page. So if there's anything like that we can kind of push for, I think that'd be good.
And Hannah Lee reminded me that I've, ahead of myself by a week. It's actually Urban Experience. It's this Monday, which is Karen's committee. Do you think we have ten minutes on your committee?
We can get it on there.
Okay. All right.
And it's Eric Finch. Eric's going to do the presentation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilmember Kinnear.
So Councilmember Caskart, yes, I had those conversations with, um, Eric Finch. I had a, um, Zoom, or not a Zoom, Teams, meeting with both he and Marlene Feist about this. And, um, so absolutely, we need to be in, in communication, and I felt that there was a gap in that communication. So going forward, I would welcome an email from you suggesting language changes so that they can be considered. And before I can actually have this on the agenda, I need a council member, another council member that is willing to, um, agree to co-sponsor.
I will. I serve on C H H S.
Okay, thank you. That's all it's got, Council President.
Yeah, I also just want to note that we, I don't believe that the Division Director position has been posted for that division, and I just continue to believe, given the low morale and the people leaving, we've got to choose a dynamic leader and let that leader attract and inspire people into it. And so I just encourage, I mean, there's so many vacant positions, but that seems to be the one you would start with, which is the overall leader, so, but. Um, okay. Anything else from anyone on that? Um, then I'll just, we'll switch a little bit. I don't have any formal proposals from the Budget Committee or the A R P workgroups, but there is a bit of an overlap. We obviously got a, um, copy of the mayor's preliminary budget, um, on Monday. And so I don't know how many of you have dug into that, but there's, um, it's nice to have something to, to look at. And, uh, two things I've note. One, in that budget, there's about fifteen million dollars of A R P funds already spoken for and that have not gone through the process yet. And so, uh, it's, we invited the mayor previously to make proposals to council about A R P spending. Um, but that, those proposals haven't really been made, other than sort of indirectly that it's included in the budget to make it a balanced budget. So, um, A R P will be, workgroup will be addressing that with the mayor and the administration, um, and asking them to make specific proposals so it can go through the council process. And then secondly, um, you can see, uh, there's kind of two different things, but one, the mayor has set several priorities, some- mayor has set several priorities, some of which I think are probably shared by councilmembers. And we will probably, um, come back to you like we did last year with some, a, a resolution with an attachment of various specific things, uh, that we think might be missing, uh, or that need to be adjusted. And then we will, essentially, I'm just putting it out here verbally right now, but we'll do it in writing as well. Things that you think are missing from the budget or that you would like tweaked or something like that, so that we can put that basket together of things, um, of what the council, that's typically what we've been aiming for the last two years is when we get something like this from the mayor's office and we'll say, well, these are what council's priorities are. And so it's both, it's kind of two different things, well, maybe all three things. One are just specific things. Um, are we going to replace the 100 low-barrier 24/7 shelter beds that the administration closed at the end of June? Are we going to replace those or not? So that, that's, that's the one type of thing. And then second is similar, is if we are, how are we going to pay for it? Is it going to come from the general fund? Um, is it going to come from, there's a few different options that it could come from. Right now, if I, if I understood the budget, a lot of the 1590 that was, we were imagining was going to go to permanent, uh, affordable housing is, looks like it's being in the mayor's preliminary budget for homeless shelter funding. And so that's a question of if, if that's where that 1590 money is going to go or is it going to go for projects of permanent housing? Um, and then the third is just general cost cutting. I think I mentioned last time we met that, uh, the budget group is looking at all the vacant positions that have not been, not just not filled, but they haven't even been given a instruction to civil service to try to fill them. So there's, you know, somewhere between 35 and 66 positions that are in that category that they've been vacant for a long time, there's no request to do that. So should those be removed from the budget as a cost, um, saving? Because even if they're not filled, they show up as an expense of anywhere from 60 to $120,000. And so it, it makes it look like we would have a deficit. So those are just a few highlights of things that we're thinking about and we're meeting weekly and we'll be back in touch. And of course, we have, um, multiple presentations from Tanya Wallace coming up for City Council to try to put some meat on the bones of what they gave us in writing. Those are scheduled. But anyway, that's just an update. I don't know if anyone had any questions or comments. That's one with Caskart.
Yeah, I'll just say, I, I've read through the budget a few times now and, and I've got a long list of thoughts, questions, concerns, et cetera. And I'm going to meet next week with the administration and talk about those with them. Uh, but one I'll just share right now is just the allocation of 1590 money and kind of where that's being dispersed and how is, is definitely something I'm looking at. And so we definitely welcome future conversations on that.
Great. Yeah. Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Wilkerson.
Uh, just in my quick perusal, um, the continued addition of administrative staff on, on that side of the House, um, just having more conversations of how those roles would play out and kind of what their structure hierarchy is, um, on that side, I think would really, uh, be beneficial, uh, to all of us to temper our expectations.
Thanks. All right. Okay, well, thanks everyone for participation today and our next meeting is, uh, Monday night and it's Indigenous Peoples' Day, so we're going to have a presentation from some folks on that, plus it's the mayor's, um, state of the city address on Monday evening as well. Everyone, take care of yourself and if you can, take care of somebody else. Have a good weekend.